I call to order the November 1st Minot City Council meeting. As just a reminder to everyone in our audience, please silence your cellphones or devices so they will not disrupt us during the meeting. Roll call, please. Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padraig Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
And Sittma. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three is our city manager report.
Uncharacteristically, I do have a few items to cover here briefly for the benefit of the council and the public, but before I get into that, I wanted to see if there was any questions or follow-up with regards to the city manager report that's included in the packet. Not seeing or hearing anything, so there is a few things. First one is I just want to give a brief legislative update as we continue to work with our partners with regards to progress of the different committees, with regards to state legislature, particularly with regards to the ARPA funding and how that will be distributed. So far, it does seem that the proposals do look favorably upon some of the requests that Minot has made, including some potential funding for flood mitigation and some other aspects like that. So those do continue to move forward positively, as well as reinstatement of funding for the port and the children's museum, the Discovery Center. Looks like both of those have unanimous support going forward, so those projects should continue to move forward positively for our community, assuming that all the politics play out as anticipated here over the days that they meet. With that, I do want to invite a couple of staff to come forward and give some updates as well, including city clerk Kelly Miltaka with regards to just a brief update on the auctioning of the liquor licenses that was that closed out recently. And then I've also asked Lance Meyer, our city engineer, to give an update with regards to some meetings we've had with FEMA regarding flood mapping and those types of things.
City clerk? Mr. Stewart and the city council, the bids for liquor licenses were opened on October 26th. We had four bids received. They were submitted by STL of North Dakota doing business as Target Wine and Spirits in the amount of $210,000, Servemore for Minot doing business as Safari Fuels 104 in the amount of $130,000, Terry Peterson doing business as The Blue Rider for $101,998, and M&amp;S Concessions doing business as The Tracks for $100,005. So those applications were sent to the police department. They'll conduct the background checks and ensure that the applicants qualify for the license, and then the recommendations will be brought to the city council at the next meeting, November 15th. Thank you. Are there any questions for the city clerk? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. I wanted to provide an update to our FEMA firm map remapping process that if those that aren't familiar with it have been going on since starting in 2007. So just to back up in time a little bit, we received our preliminary maps back in June of 2017. And for the next couple of years, we worked with FEMA to review those maps and provide technical comments to them, up until December of 2019 when FEMA took those preliminary maps and put them in the queue to become effective. So that was slated to happen in the in the summer, or excuse me, in the fall of 2020, pending Minot's appeal. In October of 2020, we did officially appeal those floodplain maps, and those comments that we had sent to FEMA went to their headquarters for review. We heard back here just recently that they have reviewed the comments, and while they haven't officially denied our appeal or accepted our appeal, what they've done is they've taken our technical comments and essentially said that, "Minot, you have a pretty strong case here. We think you have some pretty good data, and we want to take that and incorporate it into new maps." So effectively, what that means is FEMA is starting this process over, revising these maps, the hydraulics and the hydrology that goes into them, and will submit draft maps back to us probably sometime in the summer of 2023. What that means is providing Minot would not submit another appeal. The earliest that those maps would go effective is sometime probably in the fall of 2024. So I think that's good news for us. A, it buys us some time to work on our flood control project, which would shorten that window of the timeline when maps go effective to the certification of our first few phases of flood control to take some of those sections of the valley out of the official floodplain. So I think that's good news for us. And depending on what FEMA comes up with in this next round, we'll review that like we did before, and if we think an appeal is warranted, then we'll communicate that with the council and take those next steps. I do want to remind the community, though, that at some point, we will have changes in our floodplain maps that will take the floodplains out of the riverbanks as they are right now, meaning that folks with federally-backed mortgages would be required by laws to have flood insurance. And generally speaking, if you're near a river or a stream or a water body, it's always a good idea to have flood insurance. So just because the maps aren't going effective, that should not prevent the public from contacting their insurance agent and discussing their options for flood insurance. I just wanted to present that information to the council, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Meyer? Alderwoman Evans?
So for people in the floodplain who do have flood insurance right now, this would not a sort of status quo right now, right? They shouldn't see their rates wildly go up.
President Olson and Alderwoman Evans, that's correct. So if you're within the valley right now and you're in a X-shaped zone, which is the 500-yard floodplain, that's the majority of our valley, you qualify for what they call the preferred rate, and you would receive a lower premium, and that will stay the same, you know, barring the increase that the federal government typically puts on those, but it would be a status quo.
Until the new maps in 2023, then everything will sort of be reevaluated.
That's correct. And FEMA has also put out a new way that they rate policies called Risk Rating 2.0. So there's more factors now that go into rating flood insurance policies, so that's why it's always important to contact your flood insurance agent, talk through those.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further on your report, Mr. City Manager?
Just to follow up with Lance, there will be a press release that's already prepared by staff that'll be released to the public tomorrow morning with regards to the FEMA updates as well, so the media or citizens can look to the city website for further information there as well, but I don't have anything further this evening.
All right, thank you. And I will ask the city attorney to come up, as she is coming up, I in air forgot to welcome Troop 433. There's many of you here tonight, so welcome, Troop 433. You are working on your citizenship in the community badge, so welcome to our city council meeting. Hope you enjoy it and hope you learn something. All right, city attorney.
President Olson and other members of council, I presented a written report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. All right, we will move on to our consent items, and that is items 5.1 through 5.17. I have not been asked to pull any at this time. Is there any that need to be pulled? Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled? If it is not pulled, it will be passed on staff recommendations. Item that needs to be pulled. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move to pass the consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.17.
Second.
All right, that's been passed and seconded. Is there any discussion among the council members? Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Evans?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yeah.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, we will move on to our action items, and the first action item that we have this evening is item 6.1, the city hall rehabilitation to approve plans and specification and call for bids. We'll call up our city engineer, and I believe then we'll have a presentation following that.
Thank you again, Madam President. Tonight, I have with me Eric Hofer from, or Hofer, excuse me, from JLG. We'll be going through our, one of our last check-ins here with the city hall project. So where we're at now in this process is basically we have our construction drawings ready and are ready to advertise, and we're asking council to approve the plans and specs so that we can go for bids.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hofer.
Good evening. You should have some information in your packets, same information that'll be on the screen here tonight. Most of this is just recap information, so I'll scroll through it pretty quickly and kind of highlight the changes or the high points that have changed since last time I presented. Just wanted to reiterate the goals and aspirations that were established by the building committee at the beginning of this project. These are items that we revisited throughout the process, making sure that all the decisions that we were making throughout catered to these six main ideas being: City Hall should be a welcoming facility to encourage civic engagement; stewardship is important to maximize the impact of taxpayer resources, staying on budget; top talent; the facility should act as a tool to recruit and retain the best staff; I wanted to foster collaboration and teamwork amongst the departments; the facility should be flexible, spaces that adapt to the ever-changing technological and staffing needs; and finally, we wanted the facility to be user-friendly. This is the overall schedule, so here we are today at, right before the bidding phase here for an update, be looking to gain approval to move into the bidding phase and actually put this out for competitive bid. After the bidding, we would look to be back in front of you on the first, the first meeting in December to review the bids and make some recommendations on the path forward, and then construction starting shortly thereafter, and anticipating about 15 months in total for construction on this project. These are the floor plans. These haven't changed, these are just here for refresher, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. I'll just keep going through the presentation for now. We can come back here if there's any specific questions or comments on the floor plan. So I'll just scroll through these. Uh-oh. There we go. Also have the renderings that we presented at the last council meeting as well, again just for refresher, to jog your memory. This is the new exterior, the south side of the old Wells Fargo building being the new entrance to city hall. The interior shot right as you're coming into the facility off of that main entrance with the utility billing and the assessors department on either side with the central circulation core down the center, and your new city council chambers of you as you walk in from the back looking towards the dais. The budget, this one has changed since the last meeting, so I wanted to just quickly recap this. Still tracking a $13.8 million total project budget with a, about a 5% contingency as we come into bid. Again, the contingency is there for unknown things that come up during the course of construction, very important on, you know, an interior remodel project especially. Right now, tracking at about $13.2 million total for the base bid project, putting us at about $600,000 under budget, and then tracking a number of alternates that we reviewed previously totaling $1.6 million. Again, those alternates are there. If you get favorable numbers on bid day, you're able to take those. We do have to take them in order, in order to meet the procurement requirements for the federal funding. So yeah, overall, tracking pretty well, under budget going into bid, setting ourselves up well for a, hopefully, a good competitive bid environment. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hofer? Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we do have a question before us, and what would be the wishes of the council regarding going into the bidding process?
I move to approve the plans and specifications. Oh, was that Paul?
Alderman Pittner?
Oh, he's scared.
Alderman Pittner, did you make a motion?
That was me, if you were looking for a motion.
Yes, I am. So we only heard part of you. You did make the motion?
Correct.
All right, thank you. And Alderwoman Evans, are you seconding?
I certainly will.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Pittner?
Yeah.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 6.2, excuse me, is miscellaneous boards and commissions. While reviewing city ordinance, it was brought to the attention of staff that there are two committees, the Minot Human Relations Commission and the Minot Area-Wide Planning Organization that are not currently active. The Minot Area-Wide Planning Commission was established in 1972, and the Human Relation Commission was established in 1976. Staff was unable to find documentation to confirm when the last activity took place. So the question for us is they're looking for a recommendation to discuss what action to take regarding the Minot Human Relations Commission and the Minot Area-Wide Planning Organization. Alderwoman Evans?
So I would like to separate those two. I would like to speak on the Human Relations Commission, and I am going to move that we adopt alternative number three that was recommended, which is reviewing and amending the code of ordinances relating to the committee and proceeding with recommending and approving members. I do this for a couple of reasons. One, there is no time restraint, as the city manager pointed out, and I am completely supportive of the re-establishment of the Human Relations Commission, and I just believe because it has been a while, we really need to review that and come back to the council with some good recommendations and a clear vision, particularly as it pertains to, as the city manager pointed out in his memo, a lot of our visions and aspirations we came up with at our retreat. So, and I'd be happy to lead up that effort with our city attorney to review and make those recommendations, but I think moving forward with appointing members before we really, you know, dig in and clean that up and perhaps amend it might be a better order of things as it pertains to the Human Relations Commission.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Alderman Padraig Gula, thank you. Any discussion related to this motion? Alderman Padraig Gula?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to speak in favor of this. From my historical perspective, we've had activities such as this in the past. When I first moved to Minot, there was a very active Minot Commission on the Status of Women. My wife was a member of that for several years, and it kind of fell by the wayside sometime in the 1980s. I think it was focused on what we would call now issues of gender equity, more traditional family issues like daycare, things like that. They've not gone away, and I think now the kinds of groups, the kinds of people who might have a stake in better human relations, more improved human relations has widened, and I think would be a good time to take a good look at this, and if we can get everything modernized and up to snuff, I think to very seriously consider reinstating it. As I said before, many of the issues that were considered have not gone away. In fact, I think they're more strongly implicated now in our success as a community. One of the issues the state is struggling with is workforce development, and it's very hard to work even if you want to work and have the training to work if you don't have a place to take care of your kids. And that is, again, traditionally been labeled as a women's issue or a family issue, but I think it certainly has to do with the welfare of a significant portion of humanity, a significant portion of our community, namely our kids. Lately, I think there's been more concern about issues related to gender identity, to sexual orientation, things like that. In particular, we've had a big push to recognize the contributions of our indigenous peoples, the tribal nations on whose original territory we live now. So I think there are several groups now that would be more implicated, more impacted by these kinds of issues, and I think it'd be worth taking a good, long look at that.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? All right, so the motion on the table is to adopt alternate three for the Minot Human Relations Commission. Call the roll. Evans?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yeah.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yep.
Motion passes. What are the wishes regarding the Minot Area-Wide Planning Commission? Alderman Padraig Gula?
I'd also like to see us take a closer look at this. In fact, I would move that we, again, begin a similar process to what Carrie just proposed for the Human Relations Commission.
Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
All right. Further comment, Alderman Padraig Gula?
Thank you. The reason I'm suggesting we move ahead with this, move ahead with exploring it, is that again, we've been called by the citizens and I think our better selves to look more carefully at how the various governmental entities in the community can work together. We have had for many years the liaison committee between the school board, the park board, the county, and ourselves. Unfortunately, that typically deals with very mundane issues like the phone lines in the 911 center. Again, that's not a mundane issue, it's a critical issue, but it really has never looked at the more substantive issues of how we coordinate our services, how we plan together, how we work together to do what's best for the community, to develop a vision of what's best for the community. I think the council has done some significant things in that area, particularly most recently when we deliberately held back on our budget to give more of a chance to the school board to have the voters pass their bond initiative. We'd be looking at a very significant improvement in the quality of the educational system in the community, and it's one of those things where I think if we talk together, if we work together, if we plan together, the results are more likely to be positive for everyone. So I think there is a precedent in terms of us informally agreeing to support each other, but really, there's no form for that. I also understand that as communities get bigger, I think particularly as they cross the 50,000 threshold, there are federal requirements that we have various planning bodies. I know in Grand Forks, they have one between the city of Grand Forks and the city of East Grand Forks to coordinate things, and one of the things they're looking at now is the new Red River Bridge, which having lived in Grand Forks for four years, I can tell you is really needed, particularly during harvest season with the beet trucks. So those are the kinds of things that I think other communities are doing that I think we should look very carefully at doing ourselves. So that's why I would like us to take a careful look at this, too.
Any further comments? Alderwoman Evans?
Can I ask Alderman Padraig Gula a clarifying question?
Sure.
What, so in my motion, I sort of had suggested maybe me and the city attorney lead up the effort at review and recommendations. Who are you seeing as sort of the leads on the planning wide, the Minot Area-Wide Planning review? Just so we have some direction, instead of just saying, hey, yeah, let's do that.
Right. I think the current membership of the liaison committee, I think Mark and Lisa are the current members of that, and I think the county representative's the chair right now?
Yes.
Yeah, I think starting with that group, coming to them and saying, "Look, we'd like to give you guys more of a role. We would like to see you be more active," would be a very good first step. I also think the city manager should be part of that because he's been meeting regularly with the administrative staff of the other governmental entities, and I think he's starting to form the kinds of positive relationships at the staff level that we really need and have. So is there another meeting scheduled for the liaison committee?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I think in the past, they've met maybe quarterly, sometimes months and months have gone by without any meanings, meetings, and if the community is growing, if the issues facing us continue to be there and continue to grow, that doesn't strike me as being a very good use of our resources and our collective brainpower and our collective organizations if we just let things happen. So I think to answer your question, Carrie, I would propose that the two members of the liaison committee and Mr. Stewart kind of take the lead with that and kind of talk with the liaison committee and see what their thoughts are, because obviously, we can't do it on our own. There has to be willingness on their part.
Yeah, I'd just like to have sort of an action plan.
I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, call the roll. Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yep.
Motion carries. All right, that moves us on to item number seven, which is personal appearances, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come forward and to address the council on any... the council on any items that have not been on our agenda. So if there's anyone that would like to come forward at this time, you are more than welcome to do so. Seeing none, we will move on to item number eight, which is miscellaneous and discussion items. Eight point one is the recycling update presentation. So we'll ask Mr. Sorenson to come forward and give us an update on recycling.
Madam President, members of council, thank you. The last time we spoke about recycling, this council gave me the direction to go ahead and start designing the transfer station and some of the landfill entrance improvements and things that we've been talking about. So that work is done, those projects are out for bid. And one of the things we talked about the last time we spoke was kind of revisiting the cost analysis, see how times have changed and kind of what the markets look like for whether we jump into recycling or not. So the state of recycling, I guess, is what I titled today's short presentation, just kind of showing where we are and kind of where we're heading. So we currently have two projects that are out for bid. Those bids will be open this week. We have the transfer facility that opens on Thursday. That's to, that's the building construction conveyor compactor and site work for that facility all by itself. That's a Thursday bid opening, and currently, the estimated cost is about $3.5 million. We've been back and forth, I guess. We just released an addendum. Our original intention was to have that facility constructed by next fall. There's a, depending on which contractor you talk to, there's upwards of a year lead time to get a steel building delivered. So try to keep our prices down. We've lengthened out our construction timeline so as to not try to accelerate projects faster than they need to be. And really, kind of where we're sitting, it doesn't get a recycling program implemented any quicker if we get the building constructed in October versus April or June of next, 2023. So. The other project is the landfill entrance improvements. That'd be the entrance road, the site work for the scales, a water main extension. That bid opens tomorrow, and that's about a $1.7 million project. So we will open those bids this week. We'll put together some recommendations and we'll bring those recommendations forward at the November 15 council meeting is our current plan. So recycling markets have really changed, I guess, in the last, in the last year or two that we've been talking about this. Back in 2019, before we started designing the facility, basically, when we take a ton of recycling to a Minneapolis recovery facility, they charge a processing fee. And that, that number's been hovering somewhere in that $76 range is kind of a, without really bidding it and getting somebody under contract, you don't really know what it's going to be. But currently, that's kind of the number that we've been using. So back in 19, the rebate on the material that you bring was only bringing about $60 per ton. So the city would haul material there, pay to process it, and then the rebate really wasn't even covering the cost of the processing fee. So 2021 analysis, basically, the numbers have been rising gradually throughout, throughout the entire year. We're still kind of, processing fee is kind of in that same ballpark, number 76. But the year-to-date average per ton is $160. So instead of us paying the net of $16 per ton, we're receiving $84 per ton. So a pretty marked increase in those, those numbers. Those prices still reflect our program excluding glass. If we were to include glass, that annual average is about $128. So, you know, those are some things for us to keep, keep in mind, I guess, as we decide to move forward. Those numbers are, like I said, that's a year-to-date average. So they were pretty low beginning of this year, and they're really high right now. So the August rebate was somewhere around about $230 a ton. So I asked some of the people that run the recovery facilities in Minneapolis to give me, you know, what's, what's happened, why, what's going on? You know, so back in, we've talked about this before, but back in 2017, when China passed its national sword policy, they set an extremely low contamination rate for imported recyclables, and then they restricted a bunch of their import licenses. So that resulted in a huge influx of domestic supply and then really no end markets to take it to. So there's just, it was just really, really cheap, I guess, at that point. So since then, all of that cheap supply has prompted investment here in the country. And there are more processing plants that have been built and developing these domestic markets to keep the material here in the United States. So that'll provide, and that was what I, what I asked some of the questions, is like, what's happening long-term, what's happening short-term? To know if, you know, if it's $230 a ton in August, is it going to stay there? Is it going to, you know, what should these are long-term, which of these are short-term that might, might impact these? So the long-term investments are obviously a long-term benefit. And then there's continued pressure from consumers to buy recycle content or materials with recycled content. So that's actually creating more demand for these recycling products. Short-term, we've had COVID disruption, so we'd expect that to normalize and probably bring those numbers down. But from the people I've been talking to, they think that we're, we're probably seeing the bookends of the recycling commodity prices. We're probably at a high now, and they think we've probably seen the low from the 2017 to 2020 area. So in my cost analysis that I sent out about a few weeks or a month ago, I think I'd used like $130 per ton for our, for our revenues. So it's kind of in this general, generary here, we can, I think we can probably expect about a 50% or $50 per ton revenue for the next couple of years, kind of as a, as an So for comparison sake, I just, I had asked the city of Dickinson if they could share their numbers with us. So this is a chart of Dickinson's processing costs versus the rebate. They, they locked in on a contract back in 2018 when they started their program. So I think they're paying about $64 a ton for processing. So initially, when they started, you can see that their rebate was in excess of what their processing costs. And then they spent a good part of a year basically paying that net difference where commodity markets really, really took a dive. And then for the last about 10 months to a year here, you can see that numbers have really, really climbed. I think the largest number I saw was about $185 a ton. So their numbers might be a little bit behind. So I would expect August and September maybe even to be a little bit higher than this. So. So that brings us back to the cost analysis. When you plug these numbers back, back into that, the very bottom number is kind of the number I've been watching. That's kind of the net cost per account per month. The 2019 analysis, we were a little bit over about $3. And now we're, you know, in that $1.50-ish range, based on all the factors that I've considered into our cost analysis. Some interesting information. We participate in the annual utility rate survey that AE2S does. And this was started in 2002 with communities in Minnesota, North and South Dakota, and Montana. And it has since grown to nine states, and they include the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro area, compares utility rates amongst participating communities. And in the 2021, I think they had about 100 communities provide, provide information for, for the study. And they did have some statistics on recycling. So of the cities that participated, 88% reported that they had a recycling program. They participated in an average participation rate of about 72%. And then 42% of the systems that had a program are charging a separate fee for recycling. And then the average fee was about $5.60. So I just thought that was interesting, kind of looking at the entire region and kind of where we, where we would fit in there. Like I said, I would try to keep it brief, and that's kind of the state of recycling today. And I would certainly welcome any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sorenson?
I always have a recycling question. So the details such as, you know, if we would do glass or whatever materials we would be asking residents to put in their bins, that's something we can work out in the timeframe. Like, we haven't made those decisions yet, like even about how often it will be collected. So the logistics, we're still going to have some time to think through and watch those markets, see if it makes sense to add glass into the mix or take something out or things like that.
Older woman, older woman Evans, yes, that's correct. You know, really, I guess, I see the meeting next month kind of as a, kind of as a kickoff point. It's kind of a no-go, no-go point. I don't foresee the council recommending to build a transfer facility and then deciding not to implement recycling, you know, a year, a year later. So it's, this is kind of the point that we've come to. And yeah, a lot of those details can be developed over the next year and a half as we build that facility. You know, do we want to collect once a week, twice a week? That, that's still kind of up in the air. Trash can size is something that we can still work out. And then, yeah, including glass, excluding glass, those are, those are all still on the table. And those are things that really can be changed on the fly. You know, that's, that's part of hiring a recycling coordinator. We'll have to, you know, if we decide to not accept glass and then we want to start accepting glass, you know, that's, that's part of that education component for the recycling coordinator to get that out to the public and help make sure everybody's aware of it.
Any further questions? Alderman Ross?
Very good presentation, Jason. Question that comes to mind is, since we're a regional landfill, are we, is there any regulation or anything that, that we can do to, for the lack of a better term, encourage the other communities that are bringing their trash to Minot to recommend they start or require they start recycling? It seems kind of, you know, we're doing it, but nobody else around us is doing it.
Alderman Ross, that's, it's, it's a, it's a great point. It's one that we've been talking about over the last couple of years is, you know, if, if we're going to, you know, be serious about recycling, then we shouldn't be the only ones doing it. We should try to make sure that, that everybody who's bringing trash to us is doing it. You know, there's, you know, some communities that it makes sense for them to do curbside programs, you know, some, maybe there's drop, drop-off locations. I think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity there to offer this to the, to the larger region and, and figure out how to make it work. It's just, at this point, I haven't put a lot of thought into it. I've been trying to concentrate on our program, kind of learn how to walk before we, before we run kind of a deal. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to kind of roll this out to the region and make it available.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Older woman Evans.
Not a question, but Jason, I just want to thank you for walking us through this entire process. Since I've been on council, this has come, and you have taken, you know, your, your time to do the research and keep us completely apprised of developments along the way. And I really, really appreciate your efforts on this and getting us, you know, step by step to a curbside recycling program.
Thank you.
Alderman Padraig Gula.
Thank you. I wanted to echo what Carrie said and also offer a couple of other observations first. Although sometimes we're accused of kicking the can down the road, there are times when a delay is better. And I think this is one of those times. I think the markets will stabilize, we'll have a better sense of what the world economy is like. We can do some of the creative thinking and planning, like you've talked about, and Carrie has mentioned, like, do we do glass? Do we get other communities involved, which I think we should, and other parties involved in the area? I understand the Air Force Base has been very interested for a long time, hopefully places like Minot State and Trinity would be interested, too. So this gives us the chance to build the program up and when it starts going, to have it run more fully and more effectively. So I think in this case, the delay actually is a good thing. The second comment I wanted to make is that I really appreciate, as Carrie said, you're keeping us updated. And I wanted to thank in particular Harold for a change in our, in our council agenda policies whereby presentations such as yours now need to be put together and disseminated with the putting out of the council agenda on Thursday or early Friday. This morning, today, in fact, I had received two bits of input from constituents who had seen and who had read and developed very detailed questions based on the presentation that they had accessible and available to them. So I think already we're seeing the positive impact of having more information out earlier. And that's a really big thing. I've favored this for many years on kind of technical and philosophical grounds, but I think now I can also favor it and speak to it on practical grounds. If people have information earlier, they have the chance to digest it, they have the chance to ask questions, they have the chance to offer much more meaningful input. And certainly, it's much easier for us to deal with things like floor plans and project cost estimates for something as complicated as City Hall and something as expensive and time-consuming and important as recycling when we have that information earlier. So that really has made a difference for me and several other constituents. So I really appreciate you putting the effort in to have this ready earlier and then presenting it as a package to us. Thank you.
Alderman Padraig Gula, I'll, I'll plan to respond to the email also that you had CC'd me on this morning. I'll, I'll put together a, a response to a lot of the questions that, that were posed.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. City Manager.
Two, two questions and more for information to the public. And one of them does relate to the, the email received over this weekend in advance of this meeting with the presentation being out and available. First one being, not, not to go in and answer all their questions, but I think one that's pertinent to the public is, what is the value of the city running this program versus leaving it to the private sector to address this issue? And then my second question that I hear often, and I will state to the council that, well, this is a, this is a topic I get a lot of questions of when I'm out interacting with entities and civic groups and those types of things. So it is something the community is paying attention to. And to be honest, there's, there's opinions on both sides of the issue, right? There's some that believe that it's time for the city to move forward with a recycling program, but there's also a significant amount of constituency out there that doesn't believe that this is a good thing for us to move forward with. But one of the questions that has come up is, should the city not move forward with a recycling program? Is the transfer station still needed? And so I would ask for, just for the public's benefit, response to those two questions. The, the value of the city providing the service as opposed to leaving to the private sector to meet that need? And then the question about the transfer station.
Sure. Mr. City Manager, yeah. So the city of Minot, doing, doing the program versus like some of the drop-off locations and some of the other entities that are collecting some recyclables? And I guess I, I go back to, you know, what are, what are our goals to recycling to begin with? And I, and I think one of the main ones that kind of prompted some of this was some of the landfill battle that we had, and that's reducing the amount of garbage that goes, goes into the landfill. So while there are, there are some drop-off locations collecting recyclables, they're just not large enough scale to really put a dent in the amount of material that goes to the landfill. And then, you know, secondly, why, you know, why get us involved? And, you know, why don't we, we let these other, other centers, you know, develop programs? Do a Google search on why do people not recycle? And you will find page after page after page, and the answer is the same for all of them. And it's because it's not convenient. I'll admit, I'm, I'm probably a, I'm a, I'm a proponent of recycling, and I do very little of it. I'm, it, I guess it's kind of sad, but in order for me to recycle, I have to stockpile stuff in my garage. And then I have to take cardboard to a certain place, cans to another place, and then find out if there's a place that takes plastic or not. You know, it's, it's not convenient. I have a full-time job, I have three kids, I chase activities, and I have hobbies that I like to do. So there aren't many people, honestly, that are willing to make that commitment and do that. So if you put a garbage can in front of their door, and they don't even have to sort recyclables, just put it all into one container, that's where you get participation. So I guess that would be my, my main response is, why should we be doing this versus somebody else? With regard to the transfer facility, no. If, if we do not move forward with recycling, there would be no reason to build a transfer facility at this point.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And with that, we are at the end of our, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Ross.
Just, thank you. Jason's presentation brought up a question either for Lance or the guys from JLG. If you could address, do you have any concern with any supply chain issues with the kind of aggressive timeline for construction in the City Hall? I don't know who wants to address that, but is it? who wants to address that. But is it, I mean, Jason says they're a year out with steel delivery.
We had this discussion actually at our building committee earlier this week.
So it's pertinent?
It's pertinent.
President Olson and Alderman Ross, you know, not speaking for Jason, but I think generally, all of our construction projects right now have some risk associated with them with supply chain issues. We just bid the City Hall retaining wall project. We got a good bid. We were really concerned about steel pile and our availability to get it and what it would cost. And we're competing against this potential federal funding coming in for all these infrastructure projects. So sometimes in these markets, timing is everything, right? So if we're opening projects soon, we hit the right window, we may get a, get a good bid. If, if we open at the wrong time, then we might not get one we like. Some products are going to have longer lead times than others. And we've been trying to do our best to extend bid periods where appropriate, to try to counteract some of that market variability. On our City Hall project, we took a look at the completion date, and we said, well, you know, maybe it's, it's worth our time to extend that project completion date out by a couple of months just to help absorb any potential impacts. It also helps us from moving all of our operations in the dead of winter. So that's probably not a bad thing, anyway. But where appropriate, we do look at those situations and try to make adjustments to get the best bid price we can for our citizens.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
That's all.
All right. With that, we are at the end of our agenda. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Aye.
I, I think that was probably in favor. Motion carries. We are adjourned.